1915, it'll come to order.
1915, 2015.
2015. Well, not everybody's perfect, and I'm sure not. We have the agenda, but we're going to take things in a lot of order -- out of order because John Simon is stuck on the MVTA for traditional reasons. What's the first one we're going to take?
Ross, how many was not there yet? So, when the wire hill, which I said could be taken early, is not here.
Hey!
Oh, John's here. So, we could start, Dave, with 94 flagship.
I will turn this over to the chairman now.
Sorry about that. We were just going to change the order of things.
Okay.
The meeting last had the train was 25 minutes late. We had to switch trains.
So what do we got here?
Okay, we can start right with 16 Berry Street A&R application.
Okay.
Somebody may recall, they were in a couple meetings ago with the proposed A&R. You actually have a hard copy with you, so it has been resubmitted.
My name is Cal Goldsmith from both the Preston Ringwall. We're the engineers for the project, and I am here to explain our A&R plan. It's basically the same one you saw last time. It is the same one you saw last time. By way of explanation, those of you that were on the board may remember that there was a subdivision permitted off of Berry Street. It's actually an 11-lot subdivision plus the remaining land. That plan was put on record, so it does exist on record. I think the date of that plan was 2011, December of 2011. So this plan's on record, these lots exist, and what is happening for the Berry Street project is everything in yellow here that was that subdivision was purchased by the proponent of the Berry Street project. So it's everything that was owned over here with the exception of lots 10 and 11, which have the cabins on them. Those are going to stay in the ownership of Fiore or whatever they choose to do with them, but our project does not include those two cabins. So this subdivision, which exists in this form and is on record as a registry of deeds in this form, was purchased by the project proponents, and they have an agreement to purchase this. So what's in yellow plus what's in orange is what the Berry Street project will be comprised of. Okay, so the A&R plan, the purpose of the A&R plan that we're asking you to sign is to take some land off of alongside the road and out of this area to allow for the reconfiguration of Berry Street. That's what the plan is all about. That's all we're trying to accomplish with it.
So what are you going to combine, the two parts of the subdivision with the main part of it, because you're going to have to come back to us eventually with that?
We'll have an A&amp;X plan back to you once we already own this, they don't own this. So when this land is closed on, then these two parcels will be combined and all these lot lines extinguished, and then this will be one parcel.
That's what we were confused about. That's what we thought was going to happen first.
I have a letter here that I'll leave with you as a record of that, so we can explain that. And then what I've done, what my surveyor did for me, is we took the A&R plan and we took those same limits, the yellow and the orange, and put it on a clear acetate so you can see how that overlays the whole parcel. So we're combining these two lots together for the Berry Street project. The two cabin lots are not part of it. So then, once we've done that, then in order to take that land for Berry Street, we're going to widen it all along this area right here. We're going to widen Berry Street, we're going to cut this corner off a little bit and widen it there for visibility. It's going to make a big difference in site visibility. So we needed land from lot 5, 4, 3, 2, and 1, which as I said already existed to registry, so we had to take land from each of those lots, plus we have lot 12, which was the remaining land we're taking in blue from lot 12.
So hence it's the A.
It's the A, yes. So 12 becomes 12A, 1 becomes 1A, 2A, 3A, 4A, 5A along here.
Okay, and 12, the original 12 minus parcel X gives you 12A.
That's correct.
Okay.
Wait, you don't own 12A, correct?
We don't own 12A, but the application was filed by the -- we had to have the owners of 12 sign the application in order to allow this to happen.
Okay.
In front of those lots.
Yes.
There's a lot of fairly mature trees, and as I remember...
That was, yeah, we actually went through this. We had the tree warden for the town come out and walk it, and DPW, and we looked at it, and basically he said, "There's really nothing to save along there. We'd much rather have you take those out, widen the road a bit, give the drainage someplace to go, and then landscape your project." So he had landscaping to the project.
Isn't there a fence too, a rock fence?
It was a rock, a stone wall.
Okay.
And that's being pushed back.
Okay, so you're going to keep that?
Yeah, and that was part of the whole project negotiation with the town. Basically, it was agreed that North Andover Holdings would widen the road, push that stone wall back, clear the side of the road so that instead of having trees that you're trying to look past, it's a clear line of sight. You've got a place for the drainage to run off the road into that kind of little swale along the edge of the road, about five feet wide, so drainage has someplace to go. We've actually got an area in here where it comes back onto the site and flow, so it gives some relief to the drainage on the road itself. That was something Gene Wells wanted us to do, which we did. So that's all we're doing. We're not changing the frudge of any of these lots. All we're doing is just taking that thin sliver right along, along the edge of the road, and then, as I said, once the two, once the second parcel is acquired and the closing happens, which I think is going to happen sometime this spring, they're working on it now, it's a fairly complex transaction. Once that happens, then these two parcels will be combined together, and we will just have one big parcel and the two cabin lots.
It's still going to come into that angle. It's going to come into 114 at that angle.
No, actually, this is being reconfigured. This whole thing is being reconfigured, so this road now will come like this into a 90-degree angle with it, and that's been permitted through, yeah, you can't really tell on this plan, because this is just the property line plan, but that's been permitted through Mass Highway. MDM Transportation Engineers have reconfigured that roadway and got it permitted through the state, so they're all set with it. We've got those permits as well, so it's going to be a much safer intersection than what's there now. Yeah, but it's much better. And it'll have two lanes on the right, one lane coming in on the left.
Anybody have any questions? Would somebody like to make a motion to direct the planner to sign the form now?
Will we have the planner sign the A&R for 16 Berry Street for now?
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Okay, I'll give the planner a copy. Do you all want copies of this, or it's just a letter explaining what I just told you? All right, thank you very much. Planner, I believe, has the, you have the power to sign plans.
Yep.
The board doesn't have to sit and do that.
Yep. Eric, if you'd like, you can pick it up tomorrow. I'll just timestamp the application back in with the clerk, and it'll be ready to pick up. Okay, application for a site plan review for 94 Flagship Drive. Again, this applicant was in a couple meetings ago. They were requesting a waiver of site plan. We asked him to actually file and notify of butters, which has been done. Steve Webster is here from Dutton and Garfield. This project proposes to add a 315 square foot loading dock, modifications to the entrance for truck access, modifications to the drainage pipes, lines being relocated, creation of pervious area to the rear of the lot adjacent to a wetland, and change in the building use. It previously was a site of Kemlon. It's now going to be a metal finishing company. Steve, can I give you an overview of the modifications?
Good evening. My name's Steve Webster. I'm with Dutton and Garfield. Of course, we met February 17th. The weather was a little more difficult than it is now, but anyway, you gave us some homework to do. Since that meeting, we have gone to Concom and received their blessing. So they did a determination, and we have the approval on that. Since then, also, I've been working with Gene to supply more information. We gave her a photometric plan for the lighting. We produced a parking plan here, which shows 40 spaces, which is about a little more than half of what they showed back in 95 on their approved plan. So we put that on the plan and kind of takes care of that.
So if you could, because it is a public hearing, tell us everything that you're going to do, and if you could tell me, you know, tell us how much the site will change, and also if you can give us some idea how close you are to neighbors and so forth.
The major change here is that we are installing the new loading dock on the street side of this building. The planners worked with us back during 2014 to look at that, and it was placed there so that it would be on the opposite side of the neighbors. The neighbors are 600 or 700 feet beyond the property in this direction. This is the wetland area here, which we also worked with the conservation officers to place the new pervious surface, which would replace what we're removing here. So we're doing a new truck drive through here so the truck can back in. So we're removing some green areas here and here, shown in orange. Then we're creating, filling where pavement was in these areas, taking the pavement out and making and replanting those for their requirements. Also, part of the site redevelopment, we discovered that there was a catch basin underneath the existing building. This was an addition at one point. So currently, the drainage actually runs into the building and then back out, so these lines will be removed and replaced with a new line to tie this in properly. Also, we're adding hoods on to these existing catch basins, which were previous to some of the better practices that we have today in the drainage. Christensen and Sergi worked with us to, you know, survey the existing conditions and come up with a plan with the drainage and so forth. The existing business is next door, which is Central Metal Finishing. Nova Flagship is the building owner, so they're actually combining some operations from this business next door, along with a New Hampshire operation, which will be moving down. There's a stairway here to allow them access back and forth between the two buildings, and a small pathway here, which they would use for traffic, and if they had to bring, you know, a forklift pallet of materials back and forth. Harold Scheibels is with me. She's the business owner and a member of the Nova Flagship, so if there's any business-oriented questions, feel free to ask. The building will be renovated, you know, new lighting on the outside installed and so forth. There are currently overhead doors on each end where the Kemlon trucks used to go in and out. Those will be blocked yet, blocked up, and screened around where we have ventilation planned for the operations.
Is the use in... Propose use in this building the same use as in the adjacent building?
Yes.
Exactly?
No.
Want to come up and identify yourself?
It's fundamentally the same type of processing, but it will be different types of processing, meaning we put coatings on parts, and there are different processes of coatings, like putting a silver coating on or a copper coating. So there will not be duplication of those types of processes between the two buildings.
But it's a similar, as you said, it's a similar use.
It's a similar process, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And your EPA regulated?
Yes.
Okay, was Lisa, did Lisa comment at all on the EPA?
Hope we did not send this to Lisa for review. It went to conservation, and Jennifer Hughes reviewed the drainage piece plan.
I know you had a problem out there.
Yep.
Your office manager was falsifying the EPA reports.
That was what was determined, yes. Not intentionally, but it was unintentional. However, it was a falsification.
She was sentenced to two years.
In jail, no.
No?
No.
Oh, okay.
She was not jailed. She was...
Okay, because the article that was on Google, was it?
No, she was not jailed.
The reason I'm concerned is where I used to live in New York, we had a metal, where I used to live in New York, we had a metal plating company, sort of down the road from where I was, but they decided to start doing some metal plating that wasn't covered with their things. They had a severe leakage that went down to one of the last native trout streams in upstate New York. You know, there's some pretty bad chemicals you guys could use.
I would agree with you. The facilities are, well, my current facility is completely dike and enclosed. It's contained. It's been designed, if there was to be a spill of some sort, that it is contained. We're also, it's what's called a zero discharge facility. We do not discharge into the city water system. We reclaim our waters, we reclaim associated processing. There is also currently on our site, I believe, 11 wells?
Yes, I think there are.
There are 11...
And several on this.
There are 11 wells that have been tested many times over the timeframe that we've been in that location. There was an issue. It wasn't associated with our processing. It was a previous owner to our process, but we've never had an issue associated with a finding of something spilling within the regulations of EPA.
Within your current location?
Within our current location.
And that's at 80?
80 Flagship Drive.
So is this one going to have the same?
Actually, it'll be an upgrade. Our intention is to build this facility at current, with current technology for containment as well as the, you know, the associated controls, environmental controls associated with the process, and give us the opportunity to open up space and do some improvements to our current facility to bring it, you know, up to date with some of the technologies that are available. On that, how are you capping the catch plate basin within the building? Are you just putting a cover on, or is it going to be a permanent?
We'll fill that with concrete.
Concrete?
Yes.
Okay.
Pipes will be removed probably.
Okay. The stairway, how many stairs are coming down from the, what's the grade change on those stairs from the two properties?
This is, this is about five or six feet of grade change.
Okay.
Here.
So you're going to be, what, about 10, 11 stairs?
Probably seven or eight risers, something like that. There'll be a platform and rails, and actually, this path has been designed to kind of follow the contours. It would be gentle.
Okay, so there's not many retaining wall on that, but there'll be a little bit of over-creating wall on the stairway?
Right, we'll put that into the slope.
Okay. The photometric plan was very well done, thank you. I thought that was, whoever used was, did a good job on that. Storage container?
Yes.
Is that permanent screening?
I noted your concern in our last meeting, and the intent is to have a place to put some of their equipment while we're doing this work, so we could call it a temporary container.
Okay, if it's temporary, I think that, otherwise, it should really should be screened. I mean, it's not intended to be a permanent container.
Right.
Okay, so that's my questions.
Parking and hours of operation now versus before?
Currently, we're in operation from 6:00 in the morning till midnight.
It's more the use of the building, that specific site, so you wouldn't, and I'm just trying to get an idea of, are you going to have more parking than in the existing use, less parking in the existing use?
I'm not sure what the question is.
The existing parking is actually being relieved by some of this, and actually, since they own the property, they park along this road now. A few cars park over here.
And again, I'm sorry I cut you off. You said your hours typically today of operation, or what?
6:00 AM till midnight.
Okay. And what about deliveries? When would you be making deliveries?
Deliveries are during the daytime. Typically, they start about 9:00 AM till 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock.
Okay. So you wouldn't have a problem limiting deliveries to reasonable hours, so, yeah.
That was part of the discussion, why to put the dock on the other side.
Right, only, yeah, which I think that was, you know, we thank you for that, so, yeah. Gene, is there anything else we need to know about here?
Nope, they've gone to conservation, they've closed, right? They issued a couple conditions.
That'll be a pre-trip meeting on that. We need to put up some badges and so forth.
Yep.
Okay.
Mark Webster's working on this.
Okay. I don't know if anybody's here from the public too about this, but if you are, you're free to ask questions. Okay.
So I've drafted a decision. We did notice a butters. If you want me to show a locus as to how far the budding neighborhood is, I can.
Why don't you do that, and then we'll close the public hearing.
So this is depicting 94 Flagship from Route 114, which is this blue line in the center of the photo right now. Yellow is the highlight of this lot, and this is the aerial, you see the very lower corner is the nearest house, and that is on Marion Drive, so, oh, sorry.
Okay, got it.
Okay.
And they were notified?
The butters list was notified, yep.
Okay, would somebody like to make a motion to close the public hearing for the site plan review for 84 Flagship Drive?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, let's take a look at the decision here.
The decision I did not include in the monitor, and I thought I could have decided a couple times. It's up to you if you want to include it. And then, I think probably some conditions of that temporary storage trailer needs to be added in now, so I didn't include that.
Someone needs to check, I think they need someone to sign off on the capping of that line that runs in the building now.
Yep, but, so that can be conditioned, that we need a meeting when that's done to look at that.
Gene, a couple things in terms of finding a fact. I think you should put the fact that they've located the, you know, the truck load unloaded on the back to mitigate the impact on the neighborhood. And the other thing that I would say is that there's very little impact to parking and other uses based on the change, so it's really in a material impact.
Should we also say that it has been reviewed by conservation?
Yeah, you could say that too, that's fine, yeah.
Because that had a great deal to do with it.
Gene, special conditions, top of page 3D, the applicant refers to Nova Flagship LLC 94 Flagship Drive, and on page 1, I think Nova Flagship is 84 Flagship Drive?
I will verify with the application for the petition, and it should be 80 if it was petitioned as 80.
Under page 2.
I think it's 80, isn't the street?
94.
94 is the new site, 80.
80.
I just want to check their application to see what the petition listed as the address when they applied for it. And it should be 94.
What's the relationship of Nova Flagship to the, your plating company?
I own both.
You own both?
I always put the L's there.
I know, yeah, I know.
Gene, under special conditions?
Just making sure we didn't have a stranger.
Yeah.
Permit definitions, the project C, we should probably add in pedestrian and vehicle access between sites under, you have truck access and modification training, and all that stuff, so.
Gene, one of the things in the general conditions towards the end, you know, why we ought to put something that truck deliveries, you know, will be between, let's say, regular business hours, 8 and 5, I think that would be fair.
We should probably add in the time period for the storage container that's going to be temporary here. I mean, you need, for two years? Okay, storage container, two years?
Yeah, or maybe, yeah, two years, that's fine.
He thinks it's going to take two years to build it out, so.
There's a two-year rule anyway, that you have to make substantial completion, so that'd be fine.
Okay, is everybody done? Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the site plan review for 94 Flagship Drive as amended?
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan review for 94 Flagship Drive as amended.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Great. Moving right along.
Okay, the next public hearing is the application for the Osgood Special Permit from Osgood Solar LLC. In your packet, associated with this filing, you received a letter from Gerald Brown, the inspector of buildings. John, you should have a copy of that letter.
Yeah. Anybody, does anybody else have one?
Everybody received it in the packet. I gave you a hard copy.
Okay, this is actually probably something, who would like to read it? Who wants to be the clerk tonight?
From Gerald Brown, Inspector of Buildings, a letter dated March 24th, 2015, to the North Andover, Town of North Andover Planning Board, regarding Osgood Solar LLC Special Permit, construct rooftop and parking canopy mounted solar photovoltaic, I don't know, system. All right. Section 10.1 of the North Andover zoning bylaw provides that the bylaws shall be enforced by the building inspector. Based upon, based on my review of the application dated March 20th, 2015, for a special permit, I have determined the following. One, section 17.3.2 of the Osgood Smart Growth Overlay District, Osgood, of the zoning bylaw states in part, quote, "Within the boundaries of the Osgood, a developer may elect to either develop a site in accordance with the requirements of this section 17, or to develop a site in accordance with the requirement..." or to develop a site in accordance with the requirements of the regulations for use, dimension, and other provisions of the zoning bylaw governing the underlying zoning districts," end quote. On March 17th, 2014, this site, Assessor Map 34, Parcel 17, received approval of a special permit under the Osgood. Two, the solar installation for purposes of generating, of a generating facility, which is being applied for here, is not listed under the as-of-right uses allowed. Parentheses, as-of-right uses, section 17.6.1.2, and parentheses. Three, prohibited uses, parentheses, section 17.6.4, and parentheses, states, quote, "All uses not expressly allowed are prohibited," end quote. Four, in addition, the application states that is for a, quote, "manufacturing use." In my opinion, a solar installation for purposes of generating facility for some utility users who are not on the site is not, quote, "a manufacturing under the Osgood bylaw." Sincerely, Gerald Brown, Inspector of Buildings.
Okay, do we have, I see Mr. Leary's here. Do you want to come up and give us an overview of what you're trying to do here?
So the application was filed prior to receiving this.
Okay.
The applicant understood that we were going to request a determination of use from the building inspector, so this was received subsequent to the filing. We indicated the hearing would have to be opened. And based on this letter, a determination was made with the board. So Dan has indicated that his, the applicant would like to request a withdrawal without prejudice. So Dan, I believe you've drafted something?
Good evening. My name is Dan Leary with Power Owners. I'm providing development support services to Osgood Solar. And given that, I'd like to hand out a brief summary of why we'll be requesting that the application for Osgood be withdrawn without prejudice this evening. Is that right? I have a question. Yeah, sure, go ahead.
So this is basically your view. I'm frankly inclined to keep it open because I think we need to talk to town council about the best way to unwind this. I want to talk to him first before we make a determination because I want to make sure that we do it in the right sequence.
When you're plowing snow in the winter, is this going to interfere with clearing the parking lots? Or are we getting into...
Well, you're getting into the substance of the thing. I mean, I...
How did you draw the question?
I happen to agree with the building inspector. In fact, I think he was probably not as forceful as he could have been on this. But there's three or four nested legal issues associated with this, and I want to make sure that we talk to town council and deal with it the best way because I'm not unconvinced that we could just decline this, reject this because it's not in conformity with zoning. But I want to, I want to talk to him first to find out what he recommends that we do.
I'll make a motion to continue it.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, okay. So we're not going to close, but we'll talk to council and get our direction from him.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got the town meeting articles. So are these all the ones that we have to vote on?
These are the ones that you're required to, according to Ray Centley.
What about the money articles, the bond articles?
Yes, so again, I asked Ray that because I know historically you do look at those and recommend favorable or unfavorable. He does not think it's required, although I will get them for the next meeting. And I've asked Bruce Thibodeau for the April 17th meeting if he could attend.
Okay.
And he can, so. These are the ones that are required within the planning board report.
So we really, in terms of the substance of it, or is, well, the zoning one's early, the...
Yeah, it's Article 9.
Yeah. So we have that one, which is, it's the rewrite, right? Nine is the rewrite?
Yes. And then there's an associated map with that for the...
And 10 is the map?
Yep.
Okay. And then...
We have two map correction articles. One is to correct downtown overlay parcels and one is to correct the machine shop village parcels that when the zoning map was recodified in 2013, there were some parcels left out of both districts, so this is setting them back to the original maps.
And so that's it?
Those both...
So that's all the ones we have?
Yep.
We don't have any other ones?
Yep.
Okay. At some point in time, the board has to vote on the community preservation office, so. Which we're not ready yet, so.
Again, on the 17th, I anticipate...
Maybe, yeah, we might be ready then.
Okay.
Because I've been with the selectmen and the FinCom before that, so. So we should do the nine and 10?
Yeah, I believe we have a couple of butters here interested in Article 9.
So Jean, why don't you, since this was a planning board, well, I mean, it's actually coming from the board of selectmen technically, but it really was done by the planning department. So can you explain what it is and what we did and why we did it?
Yep. So Article 9 proposes to amend the downtown overlay district. I'm just going to bring up the map. So this proposes to amend the downtown overlay district by converting and extending a portion of the existing downtown overlay district, which includes the land in which the former Davis and Ferber Machine Company Mill Buildings are located, to a new Sub District A historic mill area of the downtown overlay district.
Okay.
This amendment is designed to establish a clear review process and standards within this sub-district.
Okay. Can you spend 30 seconds explaining why the original overlay district was done and why we need to do this?
So the original overlay provided design guidelines and standards for developing really the Main Street corridor, adjacent Water Street, all the way down to these mill buildings, which would allow for some conversion of businesses and residential mixed-use type developments. The design guidelines and the parcels of land are just uniquely different than what we have recently determined the mill buildings' parcels and density offer. So the purpose is to kind of differentiate the scale of these parcels, the abutting residential area. The underlining zones are IS and residential within this. And so the design guidelines that exist in the downtown did not necessarily fit easily with both conversion...
So you had bigger buildings, bigger parcels, as opposed to like, you know, quarter acre lots or 5,000 square foot lots, three-story buildings.
Converted...
These were large mill buildings.
Four unit houses into mixed-use, retail bottom, apartments top. Within these, there's two significantly undeveloped parcels at this point, and there's been a real need to convert existing mill buildings into mixed-use type development.
Yeah.
And some of the zoning regulations in downtown just don't fit easily and things become non-conforming very quickly in attempting to renovate these buildings, so.
Okay. And we formed a committee, right?
We formed a working group, which included a couple of board members, a couple of property owners, and really, the basis for the development was using the downtown overlay design guidelines and uses that are allowed and incorporating an approval process that exists within the planned development bylaw today. And so it kind of merges two different components of the bylaw into the Sub District A.
Okay. So Lynn, you were on the committee. You, how would you, if you were explaining it to somebody that was concerned or familiar, how would you explain it?
Well, generally, we fixed some of the defects that didn't apply to this site. I mean, the downtown overlay had a lot of zero lot lines, which would actually apply to the developed parcels, depending on what we consider the frontage, which if you notice these streets, you could consider High Street possibly frontage. You could see Elm Street, you know, Water Street. Depending on where you are, it would depend on which is frontage. So we made sure we put restrictions on those, on those back parcels, that there would be setbacks from the residential neighborhood. There would also be step-down heights. They made concessions on that, on certain items to make sure it fits into the neighborhood. But we also gave them a little bit of, you know, in the existing buildings, that they can, you know, increase the floor area, which we also know for density, we've already increased in the downtown overlay. So basically, it's actually, I think, a better product for the neighborhood. It has a lot more protections for the neighbors. It's going to allow them the flexibility to develop those parcels, which are empty, and also to get tenants in there. I mean, we don't want empty buildings, so. That's pretty much it, I think, on that.
Okay. Anybody else from the board make any comments? Are there any comments or questions from the public related to this? Come right up, if you could come up to the mic and...
Thank you.
Identify yourself and ask your question. We'll see if we can help you.
Thank you.
One, before you start, one question I received from some of butters was related to underlining zoning, and this does not change existing underlining zoning. It really only changed the downtown overlay versus the Sub District A classification.
My name is Bob Carroll. I live at 148 Main Street, right behind town hall, Sutton Pond. Just a couple of light questions that I'm concerned about. In reading your notes on the development, the question of traffic, the committee here, you seem to think there isn't a traffic issue, and I would differ with you politely. There is a need at the right-of-way that we have for a traffic light to be installed for any more traffic.
Is it possible, because I think I have an idea of what you're talking about, but I'm not 100% sure. I know exactly where you're talking about, so if we could maybe get it...
Yeah, at the intersection of High Street and Prescott, the East and the West Mills. I go out every morning around 6:30. And at that time, you're taking your life in your hands sometimes with the traffic coming down High Street at a high rate of speed. With any more local traffic going in there, I think there is a need to revisit that decision about traffic not being a problem. I think it is, it's going to be a problem. And a set of lights at the developer's cost, I think, should be considered. That's basically all I had to say.
The topic of lights is actually a complex one because we actually, as a town, don't have unlimited authority to put in lights. You know, we have to comply with certain state rules and so forth.
I understand that, but what I'm, what I'm saying is, I've already been run over once, right down the street on Main Street, 15 years ago, and it took me seven years to walk again without a crutches or a cane. I'm not exaggerating when I say I see more incidences of close accidents in that intersection. And it's just because of speed coming down. You can't have a police officer there 24/7. So I would ask you to consider that and consider it being put into requirements for the developer that traffic lights be installed at their expense. After all, when we built St. Michael's, those of us who are Catholics in town, the town said there was a need for a light, and we put it in at our own expense. So the cost is not prohibitive.
I know what you mean, yeah.
And it would save somebody from being injured. Like I say, I've already, it took seven years to walk again. I've been walking now for seven years. And a lot of times, there are very close instances, people just not paying attention, coming down High Street. And that's all I had to say, and thank you for your time.
We did bring up the traffic coming down the hill on High Street and coming up the hill at the Elm Street/Water Street intersection up there. And, you know, to some extent, at 6:30, you won't get as much traffic once this complex is full. Because right now, a lot of the traffic coming in early in the morning are people going to work.
That's true, but there's also traffic, people cutting through. It's used, we have a right-of-way at Sutton Pond, coming right from the back parking lot here, right down and going through. And that's being used more as a thoroughfare by a lot of people lately, and it's getting busier and busier. It's only one lane. We have speed bumps, but somehow, speed bumps don't stop people from going too fast. But thank you for your time.
Right, thank you. Appreciate your comments. Any other comments? So we, Jean, on 10, where we're amending the map, that's to create the sub-district? Is that what that is for? Okay, so, okay.
You also have this locus done?
Yeah, that's fine. Is every, are we okay with nine and 10? I mean, I think we can recommend favorable action on both of them. So would somebody like to make a motion on them?
I'll make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article 9 and Article 10.
Let's do each one at a time.
Okay, Article 9.
Nine first.
Second.
Second, Dave seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article 10.
Second?
Second by Dave. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. And 11 and 12, who are we going to blame?
I'm not going to blame anyone.
We'll blame the people who have left. Tell us now.
Yeah, John, I can't explain it. I don't know...
Blame the curf, who's no longer in the position.
I have looked at it several times, and initially, to be honest, when I brought it to you a few months ago, I had kind of focused on with the St. Michael's churches and across the street because I found that in working...
Sir, sir, could I just talk to you for a minute before you threw?
Yes.
Okay, just a little.
So I had filed those and just thought, maybe I should check them all. I didn't know how they dropped out.
Yeah, I mean, in the end, it's consistent with what it was before.
It is, and I have that map here if you'd like to see it.
Okay, just, I mean, not just in case, yeah, okay. So would somebody like to make a motion on 11?
I'll move.
To recommend favorable action. Okay, motion by Dave?
Second.
That's seconded by Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
And how about 12?
We recommend favorable action on Article 12 to amend the zoning map.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This one was much more significant. It really limited that historic district to center around Water Street and the very end of Main Street. All the way up to the library had been dropped out, and I can show you that if you want.
As long as we have that.
Yes.
Okay. The, any of these other ones?
I think they're all easements.
I mean, they're just easements, either to accept easements and... What is this easement for Safe Roots to Schools project? Are there actually easements that we're going to get?
I believe so, but that, I can have Bruce speak to that when he says.
Yes.
This was a couple of years ago.
Yeah, I think mine was, it was at Rand.
Yeah.
I believe, associated with this, and now with DPW is moving forward.
Okay, you remember that one?
They went out, yeah. There was a vague thing about creating the safe room to the, like, behind, by the middle school.
Behind the middle school on Parker Street.
Yeah.
Okay.
Green Street area. But now the DPW is working towards implementing that, as far as I'm aware, so.
Okay. Does somebody want to make a motion to recommend favorable action on 4?
I'll make a motion to recommend favorable action on...
I'll make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article 4.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, how about Article 5?
I'll make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article 5.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Article 6?
I'll make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article 6.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
My, my comment was, you know, this board doesn't have the authority that the town meeting has, and I, you know, would hope you'll be at the town meeting to talk about what you said.
Like I say, I had the misfortune of predicting somebody was going to get run over on Main Street, and my doctor told me, as a retired mailman, I couldn't stop walking to go off the walks. On one of those walks, I was run over on the crosswalks, and that's because there was no police enforcement down there. You can't be everywhere at the same time to the police department. It took, I was in the hospital for months. I had numerous operations, and it took me seven years to walk again.
Oh.
I see the same thing happening down here at that intersection between the two mills, Prescott and High, and being a mailman in that area, I know what they're doing. They're coming up, they're transiting right through High Street onto Elm Street at fast rates of speed. There were more people living down there, and we're seniors, so we're not NASCAR drivers. We're seniors. There's going to be an accident without a set of lights.
I understand. We come up, my wife and I come up Prescott Street occasionally, and I've almost been hit at that intersection of High Street, and coming down Water to make the turn is a killer. But just as long as you're?
Jean, what's this trustees topic?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming in.
Before that, John, on the article, you said it's coming from the Board of Selectment. I have this submitted as a planning board article for the downtown overlay.
Oh, no, it's, okay, that's fine. I thought, for some reason, I thought it came from the Board of Selectment. Because it had, I know why I saw that, is because it, oh, that was six.
They're included in others, yes.
Never mind, I, I thought that was, I was looking in the wrong order. You're right, that's the planning board, yeah.
Okay, so, for Wire Hill, you're Russ Hopping? Okay, Russ Hopping is here. This has been an ongoing habitat restoration program at Wire Hill. I think the last burn project was in 2006, so Russ Hopping from the trustee of reservations is here to describe what they would like to do in the very near future in terms of a burn project that would now be, previous it was on the Stevens Street side of Wire Hill. What they're proposing now is on the backside or on the lakeside, very, very close to the lake, within 100 feet on some portions.
Well, Jennifer's watching this, right?
Jennifer, it will go to conservation tomorrow, so she'll review it with her board.
They really have jurisdiction for something like this. I don't think this really, you know, we can waive any?
Yeah, I just, it's a Philly, it's a 10 acres of, of kind of lake shore burn. So, Russ, if you want to come up and describe, A, B, and C are the?
I do want to play this as head. I don't know, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so, I'm Russ Hopping, ecology director for the, for the trustees of reservations, and I am here tonight to share with you our next round of habitat restoration at Wire Hill, and that's what's outlined in red on the map, A, B, and C. We have not had any fire there at all in terms of prescribed fire, so that's what I'm asking for tonight, since this would be within some of the watershed zones. The property has had a long history of wildfire, going way back, we've been able to document that back hundreds of years, but more recently, we've tried to get ahead of that so it's not wildfire so much as it is prescribed fire to control the fuel loads as well as help restore some of the habitat there for the species that are dependent on fire. So, the next round would be this spring, assuming the snow melts and we get appropriate weather, would be for this, it's about 10 acres within the site.
So, how do you, is, the way it works is that basically it just kills off the undergrowth, but maintains the mature trees? Is that how it works?
That would be ideal, yes. I mean, so, there's hot fires, cool fires. We've really only been able to do cool fires, and this is essentially where we would consume all the, the, the small diameter debris, sticks, you know, smaller diameter things, leaves in the understory. The canopy is essentially left, you know, the way it is.
How does it help the habitat, the species that are there?
Yeah, so, what it will do is, in, it works best in conjunction where we have thinned some of the canopy, but that's not what we're proposing right now in, in most of this section. It eliminates all that debris in the understories and exposes the soil for a lot of the plants that need to have that direct contact.
Oh, God.
Yeah, and then those plants, in turn, are home for, and host for some of the rare species that are there.
Okay, I didn't understand.
Yeah, and they've, they've evolved with fire as part of their e, I'm sorry, their ecology.
Forest fires are actually good for, in a limited?
You bet. In this habitat, yes, because it's, there's 80 acres here that we've, we've defined as being influenced by fire. We can tell by what's not growing there as well as what's growing there, and we did some background research in terms of what is, you know, where the fires, you know, were. So, it's dry, southwestern exposed soils, it's perfect habitat for these, for all these species.
So, what do you do? Do it in chunks, and you do it in days, so they take it up with the?
That's right. So, we, we have a, each one of these has a burn plan, and then we, we do get that approved by somebody who has fire, you know, working with fire as part of their background, and then the DEP gives us an air quality permit. We have very specific conditions which we can burn under, relative humidity, wind speed, wind direction, because smoke management is our biggest concern here. We're not really worried about fire going down to the lake edge, it'll just burn out. But smoke is a different story. So, that prescription allows us to say, here are the conditions we will burn under, and then we typically go to the far side of the burn unit, so downwind, burn an area there, we call it black. Now, once you burn all the fuels out of there, it can't burn again, so you then burn into the black. And it's a very controlled process, it's very safe, it eliminates those fuels and achieves our habitat goals as well.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a professional, we, we have to hire a professional burn boss who does this for a living.
Yeah.
You have the fire department on hand, too.
Fire department is in the loop, absolutely. We always like to see them on site if, if, if they want to come.
How many days of burning is it?
One.
One day?
One.
My one comment is just if, maybe if you guys can notify, I know you, I know you're not going to have a much advanced notice because you're going to constantly cancel every time you wind, and?
Right.
Temperature's not right. But we do have a voicemail blast system with the town, is maybe you can work with it so it goes out so people aren't calling the fire department saying, there's a big fire on, at the lake and, you know?
Absolutely. I mean, I think in the past, we did, that's the reverse 911?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think in the past, we have done that.
Okay, because I think that'd be helpful, just because people, you don't want to get people upset if they see a fire going on.
Absolutely not.
Great, excellent, thank you.
And I will be at the cons count tomorrow.
Good, okay, great.
Do you want me to document anything in terms of a waiver or?
Um, maybe what we could do is, somebody can make a motion that this does not require a safe plan review, or we're just?
Water system.
Yeah, so, if somebody wants to make a motion to that effect.
Recommend that the controlled burn will not require a special permit.
Okay, so, you make a motion that, it's a finding of the planning board that that's the case.
Right.
So, somebody like to second that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
But, in my past conservation committee thing, I've seen controlled burns go terribly out of control.
There have been some.
Upstate New, upstate New York, right Mayor Albany.
It seems like upstate, everything's wrong in upstate New York.
I never want to live there. I never, isn't it?
They're Yankee fans, too.
Yeah, I know, yeah, imagine that.
I said the Love Canal there.
No, that's in Buffalo. Well, thank you all.
Good, thank you, appreciate it.
How much?
All right, minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the March 17, 2015 meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, okay.